Call the meeting to order and record the members present in absent.
Alice.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting is filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice that the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting is posted in prominent public view of the location of the meeting. Witness by hand is Thursday of November two thousand fourteen.
Item three, the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Three A, addition of items of new business to be agenda.
Yeah.
Three B, minutes of the October sixth, two thousand fourteen, regular board meeting and the October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, special board meeting. Three C, approval of the trade-in report on the status of funds and investments.
Okay, you have that information in front of you on investment, summary financial activity. I never know for sure what you all want, so we came up with another one this time, just to show you the encumbrance comparison for FY fourteen, FY fifteen. As you can see, the encumbrance is up five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at this point in time. That's due to some salary increases on the staff, those non-certified pay raises that we did, things of that nature. Our warrant comparison, again, we're up two hundred and thirty-five thousand compared to a year ago. I think the biggest thing is to look at your revenue comparison. We're up already two million dollars from last year, and we're in a fiscal year of only about four months, and in that four months, you can look at that gross production, six hundred and thirteen thousand, more than what we received a year ago. If you remember, our total budget is twelve point two million compared to about nine point two million, so right now, we're just really in good financial and sitting good, and we're watching what we're spending. We're also spending some, maybe some big items, knowing that we've got money so that in April or May, we don't have to make a crush on that, and, you know, so we are doing some things that needs to be done, but financially, we look pretty good at this point in time, and I like this encumbrance comparison pretty well, see what we're doing from year to year. So, really, that's all I have to say about our finances.
Three D, approval of activity fund report.
And again, good shape in our activity accounts. I would like to be at Longfellow now, twenty-two thousand dollars in their activity accounts. They've had all their fundraisers, and elementary's look good. It's amazing that you can have a math-a-thon and make fourteen thousand dollars in this community, and I know that we discuss fundraisers all the time, but this city really supports the youth, and when we have those activities, it really comes out, and you can see it in our activity accounts. If you have any questions on any of that, I'd be glad to try to answer anything. I think the biggest purchase out of our activity account has been out of the Alba High School activity account. Last year, we took donations for a new sound system, and they collected about eleven thousand dollars, and we took ten thousand dollars this month and encumbered it for a new sound system for the gymnasium, and expenditures for the general fund, you'll see later on that the district had to push about eleven thousand because it cost about twenty-one thousand dollars for a new sound system for the gymnasium. So, those are the two big expenditures that I see in the activity account at this point in time. Any more questions on that?
What is the nine sixty-five? I know it's not very much money, but...
Junior Honor Society. National Junior Honor Society.
Probably the membership to the National Junior Honor Society.
No dues?
On that?
Any other questions?
And as always, if you're gonna have an activity account, you gotta have fundraisers, and fundraisers are, you know, middle school athletics for banners that they put in the gymnasium, our TCA, raffle at the Watonga Basketball Game, freshman class trying to raise money for actually their graduation and prom expenses later on, sophomore class, same thing. Middle school Stuco, that's a fund that goes in and out because all of that money will go to the Wounded Warrior Organization, and the high school student council, change drive will do also with an in and out going to an organization on that.
Is that ongoing, or is that just one time?
That's just one time.
What's the actual fundraiser for prom expenses for sophomore class?
Frosty Joe's?
It's freshman, but is sophomore the same?
Oh, Becky, what is that?
I've got those originals in the mailroom, but hold on.
Excuse me?
It's gonna be something besides that, probably.
Bike sale. They'll sell at November seventh, January thirteenth.
Oh, that's what those dates are?
Basketball games.
Okay.
Awesome.
Three F, approval of activity fund entered account transfer.
Being able to buy some coffee for the high school, they've taken it out of the Alba High School activity account, purchased it through the concession monies, and then they'll have to replace that, so that was a donation into the activity account to buy coffee and paper chase.
Three G, approval of items to be declared surplus attached to the agenda.
Did a lot of work this summer, and these are the things that have been replaced, or we're setting in classrooms that needed to be taken care of, and these are things that we will try to sell. There's been some interest already on the industrial table saw, radial arm saw, and also declaring the surplus of a two thousand Chevrolet Suburban that the middle school cooks use, and also the Chevrolet pickup, and we have some people that are interested in buying those at this point in time, but we will try to sell anything that we possibly can, but in order to do that, we have to declare all that information as surplus. Been trying to clean up that old bus shed down there behind the junior aisle where a lot of this is stored.
What is...I thought we bought a bunch of smart boards on, like, number six.
Those are smart boards that aren't working, but in order to throw them away, we still have to declare the surplus, Coach.
How much...why, why aren't they working?
Costs too much to replace any of the electrical parts in it, or just worn out.
Things are not made to repair anymore, they're made to...
Yeah, you know, a lot of the parts can't be replaced, costs more to replace a whole motherboard in one of those than it does to buy a new one.
What about number nine?
Teacher's desk. We keep a lot of teachers' desks, but I know that we purchased like three or four classrooms full of new desks for Lincoln, and we've tried to replace desks throughout the years, Larry. Some of these are forty years old that we'll replace them. Lot of them are the old wooden three-quarter kidney shape.
The reading tables?
Right.
Well, I see music stands, number twenty-three. I didn't think those things ever wore out.
A lot of them won't stay, they keep falling back and forth. They're basically for maybe a single sheet of music now, and then when the band plays, they may have three sheets out, so it's a bigger type that we purchased a year ago, and I'm not sure, but I think these may be going up to the college so that when they host a event like a district or something, that they don't have to borrow ours or borrow theirs, they can put them in surplus. They stored some old symphony drums like that for us, so that when they host a district contest, you don't have to move those expensive symphony drums around, and they'll have a set up there for them. We sold about thirty desks and chairs last year to Buffalo Schools, and we got twenty dollars apiece for them, because they're just not worth anything. Were you around when we had the last surplus auction at the bus shed? We couldn't give those desks away?
I don't even know. Well, it was probably around, but I don't remember.
Well, we had about a hundred, and nobody wants them. They maybe want one or two for, if they're gifted in arts and craft, and they could paint it and stick it to grandchildren or something. And a lot of this stuff, Larry, has been down in the hole of Lincoln School forever, and we haven't used them in twenty years, so we need to get that storage out so we got those shelter areas and so forth.
Any other questions?
We had such good luck at selling those vehicles on that online thing, is that something we're not gonna do again?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna try.
Okay.
But again, remember that we sold our buses.
And we didn't sell any Suburbans?
Not yet.
Okay, I thought we already sold...
We gotta declare them things surplus first.
I mean the other ones we sold.
Yeah, we have, on that purple way.
Yes, so you mentioned...
Richard does a great job getting those sold, so...
You mentioned you thought you had some local buyers for these, so you'd do that in lieu of purple way, is that what you're saying?
We're getting more money out of the local buyers.
Awesome, okay.
Sometimes we'll get a trade-in, because later on, you know, other financing, we'll show you where we're gonna buy two pickups because of the sale of the buses and because of the trade-in on these houses.
I'm gonna get you a permit consent agenda.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. Item four, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for FY two thousand fifteen. A, General Fund number eleven, number four eighteen through four seventy-seven, with change orders zero through four seventy-seven, and payroll number fifty, five zero one six six and five zero one seven nine, inclusive with payroll change orders fifty thousand through fifty thousand one seventy-nine, for a year-to-date total of seven million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-nine cents. B, Cooperative Education Fund number twelve, number fifty through fifty-three, with change orders number one through fifty-three, and payroll change orders fifty thousand through fifty thousand eleven, for a year-to-date total of five hundred and five thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and fifty-eight cents. Building Fund number one, change orders number one through twenty-four, and payroll change orders fifty thousand through fifty thousand three, for a year-to-date total of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. D, Child Nutrition Fund number twenty-two, number twenty-seven through twenty-eight, with change orders number one through twenty-eight, and payroll change orders fifty thousand through fifty thousand ten, for a year-to-date total of three hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, if you look at the encumbrance register, four thirty-four, that is our favorite term, so they are putting the fans in at the auditorium, trying to get some air conditioning going on at this point in time. Of course, four thirty-six is added utilities, encumbered for the remainder of the year. Four fifty, four fifty-one, we're able to buy these pickups at this price because of the sale of our buses and also because of the trading values of the surplus that we just declared on the Suburban and the pickup. They will be used by custodian at the high school when they take the food preparation to the other schools on a daily basis, and also at the high school on giving out all the supplies to the different schools. One will have four-wheel drive, so we will have something with four-wheel drive. I believe one's an oh-eight and one's an oh-seven, low mileage. The oh-seven, I believe, is the four-wheel drive, and the oh-eight's a two-wheel drive, and they have fifty thousand miles or less on them. And then, four sixty-one, it was recommended by our insurance that we get commercial refrigerators for our cafeterias, and so we had to buy commercial refrigerators for all cafeterias, and that amount for fifteen thousand two oh nine. And then, four sixty-five, Mr. Potter has made the student lounge up there an ideal place for students to actually do some homework and use all of our cafeteria tables up there, so we had to buy more cafeteria tables for the gymnasium for our concession and our food and so forth, and that's what that is. Also, wanted to modernize our bathrooms in the gymnasium, so we're adding all of those automatic valves to all of our bathroom fixtures in the gymnasium.
What number's that?
That is... Four sixty-eight, Treat Solutions. And...four seventy-five, we're trying to clean up the state banners in the high schools, so we've ordered some for that, and we needed some repair on our photos from our basketball, so Mr. Pendleton, we've hired him to do that, so...any questions on any other encumbrances that you may have?
What's the thing with the reimbursement for Derek Thomas on vehicle damage?
We actually had a bus run into his parked vehicle in the bus barn, and we have a thousand dollar deductible, so we would've had to pay for that. But a bus driver backed into it. And then, on the encumbrance register, you'll see that we're moving all of our custodians from the building fund into the general fund to pay out of also. And then Hayden Seifert, that is a new parent at the high school that we hired. Co-op fund, normal parent travel.
How does that work? I mean, is that, do people live in our district, and we don't want to send the bus?
No, no, this is our co-op. This is our special needs students.
Got it, okay.
They come to us, and we take care of their needs here at the co-op building. The old hospital. Okay, so they actually bring their children in there.
For speech and hearing?
Yes. Okay. That's a lot cheaper than sending all of our people out to the different schools and homes and so forth, so they've been doing that for years. And just out of child nutrition program, just repairs on some district kitchens. I'll also add that due to the time that we do have, our board meetings, a lot of times it's on the very first Monday of the month, we don't always have our child nutrition reports ready because she doesn't have, so we will be doing those in the future, a month behind, and that way, we'll have one each and every time and be current. That's why you don't have a child nutrition report this time. So, next month in December, you'll have it from October and November, and we'll always be a month behind. Okay, any questions?
Do we have a motion to approve the purchase order encumbrances?
I make a motion we approve. Items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Lida?
I'm sorry.
Harper?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. Item five, principal's report.
Our enrollment number is pre-K, we have twenty kindergarten, a hundred and six, first grade, ninety-five, for a total of two twenty-one. Upcoming events, we have two kindergarten classes, Mrs. Peace and Mr. Arbroath, they're going to Beadle's Nursing Room this Friday the seventh. Along with, we'll have a picture retake Sunday, Friday the seventh, at nine AM, and we'll be going to the pep assembly at the Alba High School on the seventh at one thirty. Our school will observe Veterans Day. All of our students will wear red, white, and blue, and they'll be doing special activities in the classroom. All of the teachers at Washington, as well as Longfellow, will be going to their street first training on November twelfth and thirteenth, and on the twenty-first, our children will be going to the Northwestern Children's Play, Beanie and the Bamboozling Machine, so that 'll be fun.
Can you say that again, five times in a row?
I know.
Sharon?
I have sixty-six pre-K, ninety-six second, or fifty-eight third graders for a total of two twenty. We're going to the pep assembly up at the high school this coming Friday, and we are also doing a Veterans Day. We're going to some youth programs for Veterans Day. Then on the twelfth and thirteenth, like Allison said, we have literacy first training. On the thirteenth, we have our pre-K fingerprinting, and on the twenty-fourth, we're gonna do the Kids Against Hunger.
Charlie?
We have sixty-three fourth graders, seventy-four fifth, for a total of one thirty-seven. We'll be traveling to Oklahoma State for the women's basketball game on November the fourteenth. We'll be participating in Celebrate Freedom Week, tenth to the fourteenth, for honoring veterans, so teachers and students will be having activities all week. We have our monthly awards assembly on November the twentieth to honor those kids that are working on our software programs at home and on their attendance, and some character awards. On our half-day in-service day on the twelfth, we'll be working on some, teachers have been creating nine weeks assessments and some benchmarks, benchmark testing, and we'll be looking at those to help drive our instruction. I want to thank Coach Brown and the LSU basketball team, they helped us with our Soon &amp; Flight Academy, helped our kids build their model rockets and gathered them up when they landed on the highway for us, so it'll be a good time. Want to thank them for coming out and helping us, our kids really enjoy it.
Mr. Sutherland?
We have sixty-eight sixth graders, sixty-one seventh graders, seventy-six eighth graders, total of two hundred and five students in the middle school. Parent-teacher conferences, a couple of weeks ago, we saw eighty-two percent of our sixth grade parents, seventy-four percent of seventh grade, and sixty-eight percent of eighth grade. Again, that's up just a little bit from what we've done in the past. First quarter AR trip coming up, fifty-four percent of our students in the building achieved their goal for the first quarter, and we'll get to go on that. And also, Mrs. White set a goal for her book fair, celebrated reader points, goal of seven hundred points, the student body achieved eighteen hundred points through that, so they will get a reward for that. Basketball season starts November eighteenth, they have a home game against Chisholm. Next Tuesday's our veterans program, it'll be at eleven AM in the middle school gym. We'll have a dinner to follow for the veterans that attend our assembly. We have seven teachers over the next couple of weeks that will be attending the Enhanced Pass workshops. They have enhanced pass skills since we've gone away from Common Core in reading math. And we partnered with the high school on November twelfth for our half-day in-service. We're going, we have a guy coming from Stillwater Career Tech, he's going to talk to us about technology in the classroom.
Mr. Porter?
We actually, this last, past weekend, our band students went and competed, we had several go to compete for all-state tryouts, and we had a student make all-state in the band for the first time maybe ever, and Mrs. Brock was gonna go back and try to check some records and figure out if we've ever had a student do that, and she was real proud of Noah Place, who went and competed, learned the music, spent a lot of time practicing, and made all-state band, so we were real proud of that. We do have an all-school pep rally at one thirty on Friday, you're welcome to attend if you'd like to come and do that. We felt like that the last football game that we're gonna have this year, and we needed to, we senior night, and we needed to celebrate the hard work that those guys have put in all year, even though we weren't as successful as we wanted to be, they still need that recognition and deserve that praise that our students can give them, and we wanted to do it pre-K through twelve, we wanted everybody to be there and celebrate those guys a little bit, just for their hard work and endurance. We will have Veterans Day Assembly on Tuesday at one o'clock, and we have a code talker coming from Shaun E., and he was not one of the original code talkers, but he was kind of the second wave of those guys that came through and did that, he's a Native American, and he's going to come and visit the... He's a Native American, and he's going to come and visit with our kids, a durable ceremony for them, and that'll be Tuesday at 1:00, or next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday on Thursday, to do that, and that's kind of it.
How many kids you got?
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't pull that. We're right at 260, 254, something like that. We've, we lost maybe one today, and it's kind of volatile right now, so I didn't, I didn't pull those numbers exactly, but we're, we're in that area. We're going to teach every one of them to show up.
That's kind of like my report when I was a high school principal, we had 100% of
the parents that attended parent-teacher conferences.
We talked to everyone that showed up, 100%.
Okay, we have one resignation, Lacey Pryor, she was a parent professional, and she resigned on October the 8th, and later on, we'll make a recommendation to replace that person. No reassignments, SLO, SOO training. The principals and myself attended training at Northwestern last Monday, Tuesday, and SLO, Student Learning Objectives and Student Outcome Objectives. This is all tied to the 35% of the teacher evaluation, and it's basically for those teachers that don't have a state testing that all of that information, student information is generated for us. So anybody that's first, second grade, pre-K, kindergarten, those non-core teachers that are not tested, they have to come up with goals and objectives, and then that student information has to drive the final evaluation that a principal will give them. If they meet 75% of their goals, then they could score as high as a four on their teacher evaluation process. This is a new law that is into effect, and we're supposed to have a policy. Oklahoma School Board Association just sent out this policy today, so I didn't get it in your packet. So we'll look at this policy next week or through the month, and in our December board meeting, we will need to vote on this policy because it's a lot of work for our teachers, it's a lot of work for our administrators when they're looking at these student outcomes and so forth. And it was quite a procedure, and we spent two full days trying to learn this process. Even high school counselors have got to come up with some type of goals and objectives, and those are the skills, and those are what going to be is the SOOs. So it's tied to the teacher evaluation, 35%, and basically, we do already have a teacher performance evaluation procedure that we recognize, our instrument is the TLE, and they're just going to add these SLOs and SOOs into that. And we also have VAM in there too, and on about the third one, we're going to hike the ball and go on, so there's a lot of acronyms that we got to know.
I don't mean that.
It is. And it's all student-driven with the data on what they're doing on tests, and you've heard the principals talk about the benchmarks, that's what we're talking about, the benchmarks, and how well the teachers are achieving that, and so it will be, 35% of a teacher's evaluation will be on these SLOs and SOOs, and we have to have a policy in place by December 1st, so we will do that in December 3rd board meeting. So look at that.
Are we coming up with these objectives as a school, or?
The Oklahoma School Board Association has made those for us, and they're coming right out of the State Department of Education, and it goes right in line with what we were taught last Monday and Tuesday.
So they give you a set of criteria for a second-grade teacher or for a high school counselor?
No, we have to do that.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we have to come up with the objective for that second-grade teacher, okay? If they have 20 students, and let's say they have five special needs students in there, they're going to have to develop that plan on a tier. All of those students that score at a certain pre-post test, then what do we want them to score on the post-test? Same way on the pre-test. So they're going to have to look at their criteria, and their students in there, and they may have to have three tiers in there to give them a true evaluation. When it's all said and done, the ADF may go away, and these teachers that are teaching these lower-level kids, and they can show growth, but not to that next tier, like we go from unsatisfactory to limited knowledge, the only time we get to count them in the existing A to F is they go from one criteria to the next. But if they show an improvement significantly in their own studies and benchmarks, then we will get credit for them in the future. So this may be a good thing for us, but it's going to be a hell of a lot of work for our teachers at this point in time. It's going to mean an extra two, maybe four observations and evaluations front with the principal and the teacher to get all this completed at the same time, so.
It's in your spare time.
Yeah. You know, and there's some good things that's going to come out of it, we can see our own student growth, we might see some curriculum alignment come out of this also, but like anything else, it's going to be a lot of work to initiate and to get going. You know, we sat down and talked to a company today that does a lot of this with the student data information, and they can generate the information for us, and it's a software company, and we have worked with them in the past on all of our student information, so that you can get all the graphs that you want, you can break down all the standards that we have and all these pass skills and so forth, and see what standards aren't being mastered and so forth, and why aren't they? Is it just a teaching style, or is it because the kids aren't understanding the vocabulary for that DLK, Division III testing that they have to know and so forth? So, but it's going to be a lot of work, and it has to be implemented, and we just went to the training last Monday and Tuesday. I think most of the principals have talked to their teachers and let them know that this will be going on in the future, and really haven't even had time to sit down with the teachers to teach them how to do that yet. But it was pretty intense training for two days, and that's part of the policy, and I have not even looked at the policy yet to see what we're going to have to change or anything else, and we will be working on that just like you will be.
And this, the teachers will be evaluated with this, this school year, before May? Is that right?
Yes. It will not affect a teaching evaluation until next year. But you know, in our strategic planning, we talked about maybe some merit pay or something to that effect in the next, in the near future. This could affect that type of situation. So it's pretty intense, and we kind of knew it was coming down, but we didn't know what was coming down, but we do now. And boy, we appreciate being able to go to college and do this for two days and not have to travel to Oklahoma City to do it. It was very nice to be able to do that. I really don't have any legislative updates, that's just on there, so we'll just skip over that. Strategic planning, very good meeting, I thought went well. I tried to create a, to recap what we did, I know that, I've already talked to Mr. Tucker about getting some quotes on the handicraft ramp at Washington, because that needs to be done immediately. Haven't talked to Steve to get the quotes on pre-removal Longfellow and the repairs, but we'll be talking with the county commissioner on Thursday at 1:00, and a bulldozing company to look and see what we could do to make the football field accessible. We're going to be looking at those items, and those are kind of, how we voted on to the most important. I did talk to a architectural firm last Friday, we looked at the proposal, we were looking at possibly extra parking at the high school for basketball, and adding an athletic complex and park room on the tennis court, and looked at some building sites for possible new building in the school district. He kind of told me that if we were very serious, then that we need to have another strategic planning meeting and have the architectural firm come up and visit with us, talk to us on what we want to do and those types of things. Contacted Stephen McDonald's Bond Issuing Company, they're going to give us some information on the money and that type of thing, they're going to be communicating back with the architects. There's no cost on the architect for the bonding if we go to a bond issue and it doesn't pass. And if we do something on our own without a bond issue and we need the architect, then it's a 6% and it comes out of the total budget, so forth. So very, very first stages of what we discussed in our strategic planning and what we're doing. But these things that we looked at, short-term planning and those types of things, we will be looking at the cost to the district and seeing what we can do within this year's budget. Any questions on that? Did you get one there?
Is this in order of what we felt like was priority?
Yes, that was a priority at that point in time. There's some that were left out because it was a domino effect, you know, if we did this, this was going to happen, so I tried to just get the main items that we were looking at and how we voted. And again, that's how we voted in that strategic planning. We have another strategic planning, or if we have a board meeting and we want to do something, then we can do that and actually take votes. This is how that particular meeting came out and what we prioritized and what we were saying at that point in time we felt like was important. But we've taken some steps to get some of these things already in the planning stage, so that's where we're at at this point in time.
Was there any feedback after it being published, you know, people seeing this? Was there any feedback from?
I haven't heard a lot, Linda. I know that I was very pleased with how it went and the good ideas that we got out of it, and I thought it was worthwhile, I really did, you know. You know, in talking to the architect, he looked at our existing arc and football complex, and he says, you know, you've got some really great steel structure that you need to think about taking that steel structure and making you a storage area someplace, because that's expensive stuff. All those red I-beams and everything, take that down, put some tin on it, might have some extra bussing or something to that. So talking like that, there's just lots of good things that came out of that. Okay. Creditation report. Of course, our principals, secretaries did a great job getting all the information in on our due dates and so forth. We had an October 15th deadline. We are going to be accredited with some deficiencies at this point in time, and it's due to our teachers that we hired that we knew were not accredited or highly qualified at the time, but they are going to be taking the tests and should get highly qualified, and that's the only deficiencies we had, and that was just the hiring, and we knew that that was going to happen. School board elections, a year ago, we looked at closing some precincts and didn't want to do that because we want to make sure that everybody that wants to vote has that opportunity. So I went over to the board election and talked to them, and if we would close those precincts that we will be talking about later on, it saves us $300, but they will mail the school election ballot to each of those particular people in those precincts. And I think we have three with seven or less and one with nine in those precincts, and out of those, the most that voted has been three people in a precinct. But we all felt like last year that everybody needs the opportunity to vote if they want to, and I'll make them come, but with the idea of the cost, it cost us to mail them to those precincts that we could do that, and all of those people in those precincts would get that school ballot to vote on. So when we talk about closing other precincts later on in the agenda, that's why I wanted to bring that up at this point in time.
If you were to mail me a ballot, my responsibility would have to be to take it and get it notarized? How, how do you?
No, you just ballot and just send it in, just like an absentee vote, isn't it? You don't have to get those registered, do you?
Yeah, I mean, you just can't, it's.
You got to be notarized.
I think so, I would think it'd have to be, the person that was voting would have, someone would have to justify that that person was the person voting.
Well, I didn't ask that, so I don't know.
I just, I just wondered what this, you know, for an elderly person maybe in one of these areas, would that be a hardship? I was just asking, not that I.
I don't know, that's a good question, because I didn't ask that question. And when they said that we'd mail them out, I just assumed that they'd mail them right back and it would be a problem.
I think somebody's going to have to attest that that's who they are.
I think that's why I think that's.
Well, it sounds reasonable, doesn't it?
I would think.
We're not Colorado.
Really?
Let you, you know, the most we have in one is 10, and out of those, they said that they get about three to vote for max, but we can decide that when we vote on it later. That's all I have, do you have any questions?
7A, discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve requests from Electric Gold Booster Club to travel to New York City, April 15 through 18, 2015.
And Electric Gold Booster Club will be paying for, and they have gone to these types of activities in the past, they're actually not in any competition, but they will be performing on the USS Intrig and giving a performance there. And I would recommend to the board that they be approved to take this trip.
I so move.
Second.
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 7B, discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve requests from Alba Band to travel to Wichita, Kansas in school vehicles December 9, 2014 to participate in Tuba Christmas.
And this is probably one of the biggest Tuba gatherings in the United States, and our kids would be able to participate with all of it, and they'd leave after school, and we, you know, have about 10 to 15 kids participating in that, and I would recommend that we allow them to travel out of state to Wichita. And I would recommend that we allow them to travel out of state to Wichita for this activity.
Make a motion we approve Alba Band to travel to Wichita, Kansas.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 7C. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve request from Alba FFA Livestock Judging Team to travel to Louisville, Kentucky, November 17 through the 19, 2014.
These young people earned this right last year representing Alba High School. And part of the program is they can come back as graduating seniors. And I'm asking that Randy Nation be able to take these kids to this particular livestock judging team, town.
So, these are last year's kids?
They are. They're out, they're representing, if I'm correct, Alba 4H program, which we have worked with in the past.
Make a motion we approve the Alba FFA judging team to travel to Louisville, Kentucky.
Second.
Arthur?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 7D. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the closing of the following precincts from upcoming school board elections. 20,001, 10, 20,003, 10, 20,002, 20, that's 76,008 are the numbers on the precincts.
And you don't have the information on the number of voters in there also?
Yes.
Jake makes a valid point, so.
Savings to the district is $300?
Per precinct.
Per precinct.
Would we be able to act on this? If we waited till next month and still would it, or would it be too late for the next election?
Uh, you're going to ask a question I'm not sure that I know. Let's see what the back of this information has in a puzzle.
Okay. Becky said she could make the phone call and we could wait to act on this and we can move on in the agenda. She would make the phone call to Sandra Cohen.
Ask her if the, if like precincts can be combined.
Okay.
And, and the other, what was the other one about?
Well, about the mailing of ballots. Would they have to be notarized back? That could be a hardship on elderly.
So, we're going to move to 7E?
I don't hear that. Got to be more 10 registered voters in the county. I would think so, too.
Well, maybe another district down there that they do have. It takes a while, there's only two.
Trying to figure out Woods is, would be Tacoma.
We can wait. As well wait, since one's going to be there anyway. I'm not sure.
Now, Alfalfa, there should be one like that takes in this side of Carmen, like where maybe Kenneth and Sally got voted. That would be Alfalfa County.
Well, see, the Alfalfa County is up in here where we.
Well, it's east and south.
We border with Vernon and so forth. See, there are, there are districts in Alfalfa and.
But see, the Gordons would vote in Alfalfa County, there's a precinct there. That's why I'm lying, they are actually in Alfalfa County.
But they, but they're in the Cherokee School District.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are. They had to do, they had to do an open transfer years ago.
Okay, sorry. I thought they went to Tacoma's school before Carmen, before they came out.
They had to do an open transfer years ago.
Okay.
There are a couple of other families that live right close to them, but they had to do an open transfer. And it's seen in the Alfalfa County to take up Carmen down there.
I just hate seats closing, I really don't. I hate seats closing.
And that's your option?
Did they recommend it to us or did we ask about it?
They recommended it.
Woods County one, okay, all right. Okay, so a bunch of those already voted absentee. But there is an affidavit enclosed in the ballot and they do have to take it somewhere and get it notarized.
You were right.
And we can.
Makes sense. It's like voting early, you know, it's like an absentee ballot.
See, I vote absentee by walking over there. Tell all that information out there, I guess.
If you vote in, on the machine, you're not voting absentee, but I mean, absentee is different than.
I had to go in the next room and have mine notarized when I voted early one year.
Now, you can walk into that little room next door and just vote like a regular person, it's really nice.
She said a lot of those people are in vote absentee. And we can combine some of the stuff that I did.
Do we have to vote on it this time, Becky?
I want to know for that. Let me get your back on that one. There is an affidavit enclosed with every ballot, but they do have to take it.
Well, I didn't even think of that, you're right.
Okay, can we, can we go on this in December and we decide to just not take vote tonight? Is that too late?
I could see maybe closing the Alfalfa, the three in Alfalfa County. I don't. Seats closing in Southwoods County.
November 15th, they have to have the resolution.
So, that would be for the next board meeting.
And if that's the way you would like to make the motion to close those in Alfalfa and open either one of Woods County, you can do it that way?
Didn't she say that most of them are Woods County?
The Woods County already vote absentee. She said most of them in Woods County, in the precinct eight. And I said the Woods County precinct and she said yes, she said most of those already vote absentee.
I don't know, I'm frightened about it. Are you frightened about it?
It bothers me.
Bother me too, though.
It's $1,200 for the four precincts.
You can leave the one in Woods County off. Love to close the one in Alfalfa?
But there's nine and one, I mean, what's the difference?
Yeah.
And there's, you combine the total, there's more in Alfalfa than Woods that.
Which one, Alfair, yeah?
I don't think it's fair.
It sound like maybe if we're going to close any, it ought to be the Woods one, from the information she gave us. They already vote absentee.
I think for $300, it's not worth just closing one.
Well, I agree. I mean, this could definitely be something that we could look at. I think, but I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Do we need to make a motion or does it need to die for lack of motion or?
It can't die for lack of motion.
Right. Where we at? 7D. We have a motion for 7B. 7E. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the annual election reso, oh, never mind. Moving on. Right, didn't even have to talk about that one now, right?
7E, no, we have to approve the resolution to vote in seat number five.
Oh, that's not, that's a totally different deal.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
7E. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the annual election resolution and call for a school election to vote for a Board of Education member from office number five. Who is that?
And that's all the information that's sent to us and that's the resolution sent out each and every year. So, we have to do that to be able to have a school election. So, I would make the recommendation that we approve the resolution for school board position number five.
I make a motion we approve the resolution, 7E.
Second.
Officer five, go ahead, I don't know how much of it I should.
Second, sorry.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes. Ellis?
Aye. 7F. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the board meeting dates for the calendar year 2015. Can we have that?
There was one on the front of my board.
It's right here.
I got it, I have it. One thing I saw on it, on this is the starting time. I don't know, 5:30 sounds better to me.
Me, too.
We've talked about it before. What do you guys think?
It makes no difference to me.
Okay. If it's not a big deal, we can just keep it at 5:30, it'd be easier for me, I know that would be a 5:30. I don't want it started any later than that, but I would really like the earlier start time.
I like 5:30 myself, too. I don't have to leave early.
Any problems with the dates? We tried to match them as best we could with what we've done in the past and also to get the bills paid in a timely fashion and so forth. Because we discussed some of those dates thinking that, you know, it'd be hard to get a board agenda on January 5th, but, because that's when we come back to school and so forth. But we feel like these are the best times for our vendors and to meet our financial obligations. So, these are the dates that we felt like are good. I have no problem with a 5:30.
It has to be that in motion.
Make a motion we approve the 7F.
Changing.
Can I say and change the date, the time to 5:30?
Yes.
I will do that.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 7D. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the non-certified bonus schedule attached to seat.
Through our teacher negotiations, we have contracted a Christmas bonus for our certified teachers and felt like, and deserving that our non-certified should have a Christmas bonus also. And looking at that, we looked at nine months, 10 months, 12 months and based it basically on the same type of bonus for our certified teachers. And that total money will change a little bit because of the different types of employers that we have, or employees that we have now, so it could vary a little bit. But, I think it's fair. Our, our non-certified also got a little bit of a pay raise at the beginning of the year, so they've had a pay raise and this would also give them a Christmas bonus.
I move that we approve the non-certified bonus schedule as referenced in attachment C.
Second.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 7A. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the temporary employment of the poly non-certified personnel for the remainder of the school year 2014, 2015. 7H1, Jim Case, 7H2, Kimberly Clark.
Jim Case is be replacing the resignation of Lacy Pryor at Lincoln School. And I believe Kimberly Clark is a new addition to Longfellow for a student that definitely needs a par. And I would recommend that these two would be employed for the remainder of the school year as a par profession.
Where did you say they were going?
Jim Case is going to Lincoln and Kimberly Clark will be working with an individual at Longfellow.
I make a motion we approve the hiring of Jim Case and Kimberly Clark.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 7I. Presentation of the dropout report 2013, 2014.
Well, this is never a fun report to give to the board because it's skewed to a certain degree. But we had a total of 15 dropouts last year. And a total of re-entered, just had four. And the way they look at this, four out of those 15 students that were considered dropped out were discipline problem and were suspended for a semester. They didn't complete their assigned work that was given to them by law. And so, they're still counted because they have no credit as a dropout. We had five students that told the high school that they were moving and signed the moving papers and all that. And then, if they don't go show up in another school district and don't report that, then they're considered our dropout rate when they move to another town. And we had two that just basically dropped out of school and that. Out of the 15, we did have four that re-entered. One was court ordered to complete his GED. That particular person turned 18, did not complete his GED. And then, we had one that stayed and homeschooled. And two were assigned to an adult education program to where they could earn a GED and a lot of times a job such as Guthrie Job Corps. So, that's a little skewed, so our percentage of dropouts last year were 4.33%. You might even see that go up this year due to the fact of students coming in and out of our school because basically of the oil play to a certain degree and parents coming. I know that we've had a young man move in here from California, going to live with his brother, going to start all over, comes to school every day and does nothing. And then, they get these reports and progress and I know Mr. Duncan, Mr. Potter call and find out, what are you doing, you're not doing anything? Oh, I'm not unhappy, I just don't want to learn, so they quit coming. So, we have to declare them a dropout. And then, we get that on there. So, they're skewed a little bit.
What do we do, what do we do with that student? Or what are, what's the next step with that student with Mrs. Duncan, working with that student? And then, they choose not to come back, what is the next step? Is it just that we consider them dropped out? Or do we seek other ways of helping that student?
Well, the two that we helped last year went to the Guthrie Job Corps to get new learning, get a GED. So, we pointed them in that way. We try to encourage students to get online to the K-12 and do their homework there and get all of their necessary subjects and everything there. But if they, even if they enroll on that online, if they don't complete things, then they're not considered a student and then we get the dropout again. A year ago, those students that were homeschooled, no matter if they were homeschooled, were counted toward a dropout. This year, I believe it's changed that a homeschooled student will not be considered a dropout. And then, you get these 18-year-olds and they just don't come to school and there's nothing you can do. Because any 18-year-old has to give their own parents permission to look at their grades, their attendance and so forth. their attendance and so forth by the letter of the law. Because they're adults in the state of Oklahoma.
An 18-year-old doesn't know he's not going to college. And don't you tell him.
So, so those are a little skewed, but yes, we do have problems. We have kids and I promise you that our counselors and our people work and teachers work trying to get them here and.
Are there people on the outside that we could refer them to? Are there pastors within, are there, are there ministries within the town? Are there any other social, like county things that they could be referred to?
Northwest Family Services, we refer kids to, we refer kids to DHS. You know, there's Thunderbird Camp. There are a lot of things that we try to do with students. And I know, I fought it for 28 years. And you just get to the point in time that you've offered everything and, and they're creating their own discipline problems and not doing anything. So you suspend them from school and then you give them the opportunity to give, to make their school through our software package. All they got to do is get on and off a computer and we give them password and they can do all their homework and so forth.
At home or at the school?
At home, anywhere. The only time that we'd request them to come back to school is to do a test. And they can come back at any time they want to.
Is that through the Altair program?
Yes, that's through our software package, what's it called now? E2020?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity, but it's E2020. But that's how a state looks at, at dropouts and so forth. So, that looks hard. We've had kids interact, drop out one day, the next day they come back. And I know we had one young man that dropped out four times last year. And we always take them back. And we try to give them the educational plan that they need and whether they can be successful. Just can't reach all of them this time. But it does look bad, but that's what we had last year. Any questions, dropout? Check.
7J. Discussion on possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the FY15 contract for secondary career or technology education programs.
Pretty standard policy that we just need to approve this so that we can have our Ed, Education, Family, Consumer Science, and Science and Technology and Engineering and Math. And this is just a contract with the career tax that we do each and every year. So I would recommend to the board to approve this contract.
I thought we approved the contract for secondary career and technology education program for FY15.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
It was in Business, item 9, signing the documents approved by earlier action.